We will come to order, may I have a motion to open?
Can move personally.
Second?
Second, take the aisle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will now enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel. (audio cuts out)
Notice that this regular meeting and public hearing on the budget for the Pittman Board of Education was advertised in the South Jersey Times, posted at Borough Hall, a copy thereof delivered to all Pittman schools to be posted, and posted on the district's website. Further notice was posted and filed as required by law stating that the board would meet an executive close session at 7:00 PM, followed by a regular meeting at 7:30 PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. The president shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the conduct of this meeting on the grounds that it violates the Open Public Meeting Act. Good evening and welcome to the Pittman Board of Education meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Rose, will you please hold on?
Miller?
Here.
Papalargo?
Here.
Grossman?
Here.
Miggi Iona?
Here.
Fulton?
Here.
Farrell?
Here.
Crispin?
Here.
I will turn it over to Mr. Crispin.
All right. So I think we're all aware of the fact that tonight is the public hearing on the school districts 2023-24 school budget. We have prepared a packet for both the board and the public to reference as we go through this presentation. And I'm going to utilize that packet primarily as the resource of which I will be referencing as we work through this conversation. And I guess I would preface this by saying, and I know you won't be surprised when I say this, I started looking back at how many budgets I personally have had the opportunity to present. I started as a business administrator in 1987, figured out that that's probably about 36 years, so I've been 36 years of budgets. And certainly, this has been the most challenging, and not the most challenging in terms of the solutions that we've implemented to address it, but just the most challenging relative to the complexities of all the different layers that existed in the budget that we inherited, as well as the budget that we were developing. And I'm going to do my best tonight to try to break that apart, to make this somewhat understandable, and not just for the public, but also for the board. And we probably have spent, I probably have spent, we have probably spent more time talking about this year's budget, this year than any board that I've ever worked with in the past. And again, we know we had the issues, but it's more about the complexities of the numbers themselves, balancing the budget, some of the challenges that we are facing, in addition, beyond the reductions in school aid. So hopefully it'll be as informational for them as hopefully it will be for you, and I'm going to do my very best to make this as simple to understand as possible. I'm not going to go through everything line by line. A lot of this is reference material for you to review. You can look at the budgetary process that we follow. We try to start from the perspective that we start at zero, and we build a budget. At no time do we ever say, oh, you got X last year, just add 2% to that, we'll make that your number for this year. Everyone needs to justify everything that they're looking to receive budgetarily in the following year. On the second page, responsiveness to taxpayers. I think there's some good points there as far as the statutory cap, health benefits reform, transparency, and the scrutiny of expenditures. Obviously, there was a lot of scrutiny this year. There's going to be a lot of numbers that generally may not make sense as we go through this process, but please be very confident that we've looked at every penny, obviously, to try to save wherever we can. And what you have in front of you is what we need to move forward and still provide the same level of high education that we have in the past. I want to highlight this first one, statutory cap on the tax levy, because I'm going to come back to this one, probably close toward the end, when we talk about the tax impact. It's very important to understand, there is a 2% cap on the tax levy. As a taxpayer, myself, and all of us, probably, that's a great thing. I was in this business, went before the cap came, and many of you may remember, we used to go to a ballot box, and we used to vote on the school budget. And I can tell you, budgets were going up probably close to 5%, 6%, 7% back then. They first came in with a cap of about 4.5%. And even that had so many exemptions, you could really double that in some years. Then they decided to get rid of the vote, and by getting rid of the vote, they went to this 2% hard cap. I think they thought that this hard cap would drive down all these other costs, which it has not. And it's really, I think, worked to the detriment of school districts, and it makes this even that much harder to create a balanced budget. And I'm going to come back to the fact that, over here, and we're going to look at this, we have a revenue source. Right now, it is the only revenue source we have that's going up, because we know our other primary revenue source, which is state aid, is dropping significantly. That revenue source that we have, the only one we have, is going up by 2%. Over on our expenditure side, we have expenditures, of which salaries and benefits, of which make up 85, probably more than 85% of our budget, are going up much higher than 2%. So even if the state gave us exactly the same amount of money that we got last year, we're already at a deficit. We're already having to cut our budget. That's just the nature of the business that we're in. So again, from a taxpayer perspective, a 2% cap is a wonderful thing. From a school district perspective, it is not a good thing. And there's very few opportunities to exceed that. We do have an opportunity to exceed that this year. We're going to talk about that in more detail when we get into the tax impact. So we have the statutory cap there, and I just want to kind of highlight that. Next page there, you can just see a comparison there. I have 21-22 at 25-24. I have 22-23 at 24-160, and if you want to write it down, I'm not sure if you have anything, but if you have 23-24, I have that at $23,798. Really just showing the continual progression of how our budget's getting smaller every year. That is not the norm. I don't know that I've ever been, you know, in my years in education where we're starting to see that more and more as a trend, obviously, especially for the S2 districts who are losing state aid. So it's not a great place to be, but it's the reality of which we have to deal with. So that's been coming down. We're going to focus on revenues to begin this conversation, because revenues drive everything. We can want the world for what we want to do in a school district, you know, even if state aid is not being reduced. But it all comes down to how much money that we have to support that, because at the end of the day, we have to have a balanced budget in which our expenditures equal our revenues. Before I even get into that, I want to talk a little bit about some of our goals that we had going into this process. And this is where this was a much more complex budget, not necessarily just because of state aid, but just because of some of the other issues. So obviously, our first goal every year is to maintain, and if not enhance, what we currently have as an educational institution. So maintain all staff, maintain all the costs that we have in supports of all the extracurricular activities, co-curricular activities, instructional activities. We want to hold on to what we have. And I would say, generally speaking, when we began this process, we were thinking very optimistically, not even having the thought that we would be where we are today, that that's where we were going to be, that we were going to be maintaining. You might have to cut a little bit here and there, but we think we could, we could hold on for another two years to get through S2 and then start to recover. So number one was to maintain what we had. Number two, we knew, and this board, we talked about a lot, we needed to fix the fact that we used much too money from surplus to balance our budget. And we're going to talk a lot about surplus tonight. Budgeted fund balance, they're the same thing. It's kind of like your savings account. We use too much from our savings account, which is a one-time revenue source, to balance our budget, to cover expenses over here, knowing that they may not be there the next year. We wanted to fix that. And that was kind of the tune to about $400,000 was used in this year's budget to balance things. So we wanted to fix that, and I'll give you more details later on. And the third one is we used a significant amount of our federal monies, ARP-ESR, to also balance our budget. We had about five high-paying salaries that were coming out of our ESAR. ESAR was the federal money we received, which is kind of COVID relief. That was a nice pot of money, could have been about $1.5 million roughly, maybe, is that about right, ARP-ESAR? About 1.5 million that we could really kind of use any way we wanted. Maintaining jobs was a permissible use. And we used to have to about 500. So in order to fix that, we had to get those five positions out of ARP-ESAR, and we had to get them into a budget, into this budget. A budget that was already seeing a reduction of 1.5 million in state aid, and we had other positions that were being funded through the budgeted fund balance, so we had to get them in the budget. So you can just see that there was a lot that we were trying to accomplish, and I think we did a pretty good job, but as I think you're going to see, we weren't able to accomplish it all. And I'm going to be very, make sure everybody understands kind of where we stand with all this. So that was our goals. So let's say that they're our top three. And state aid, we know, just decreased by the 1.474 million, a little bit more than we expected. We've spent a lot of time talking about it. There's a lot of nuances here that if we have time, we can share. There are some reasons why we are where we are, and some of it's not quite fair that we're where we are. Some of it has to do with the recent reevaluation we went through. We could get into that at some point if we want to. But there's things that we're looking at on that end. Hopefully, that through those conversations, maybe we don't experience what we experienced this year. We're hoping that the people at the state who are looking at the funding formula will take these types of things into consideration. But just understand, there's inequities in terms of how districts are funded, and we are definitely on the bad side of those inequities. So state aid decrease of that amount. I talked about the levy, the local tax levy of 2% increase, small little increase compared to the increase in costs. Budgeted fund balance this year, we're going to talk a little bit about that. Right now, it's more than last year's, but you're going to, I'm going to try to provide an explanation of why that is the case. And then we had this, another complexity that got thrown in, which was a good complexity to some extent, and what this was stabilization aid, in which, you know, and we don't know really the reasons why. We think it's because, from a political perspective, you know, maybe there were some areas being hurt that they don't want to see hurt, and they want to try to fix that so it doesn't come back as a negative. So somewhere, I think it was bipartisan, decision to refund 66% of the aid that was lost, which was really, really nice. Maybe it's a recognition of the impact that this loss is having on the S2 districts, don't know. Maybe it's an indication that they're going to fix it for next year, we don't know. But it was good. I mean, relatively speaking, it's good. It's going to allow us to do some things that otherwise we would not have been able to do. I will say, it does help to get us through this year, but doesn't fix it, because it's a one-time funding resource. That's the most important thing to understand. It's like budgeted fund balance. It's like ESAR. They're all one-time resources, and when they're gone, you got a hole to fill. And if you're not getting a lot more money, you can't fill that hole, and all your back, you're just back reducing again. So that's where we are, stabilization aid of the 973. So let's kind of dig into this a little bit. I'm going to focus a lot on these printouts and just try to highlight a few things. And so the first thing, the first line is the local tax levy, the $14,892, $15,190, $15,493. You have built in there the 2% increase, and that's budgetary, that cap that we have. But there is a little extra in the 23-24 budget that we're proposing. It's about $150,000. I'm going to talk a little bit about, more about that when we get to the tax impact. So if you're sitting there doing math, and you take the $15,190, $141,41, you multiply by 2%, you're going to come up short. It's not going to come out to that number, and I'll explain that in a bit. Let's drop down to the middle, and you can see all the state aids that we receive. Transportation, extraordinary, special ed, equalization, categorical, security, others, state reimbursements. In the middle, that equalization aid is the biggest aid, and that's where we're seeing our biggest reductions. And just in the three years, you can see it going from the $6.8 million to last year, to the, yeah, the year before, 5.7 last year. Actually, it's two years ago, last year. Try one more time. Current year. Middle year, the 21-22 is last year, 22-23 is the current year, and at the top, 23-24 is the proposed next year. So the current year, we're at 5.7, and the proposed for next year is 4.2. And there you see the difference in aid. It's a significant amount. Kind of thought we'd lose a little bit. I don't think we thought it was going to be that much. And again, as I described earlier, there were some factors involved that increased that, but it is what it is. So that's where we are there. And if you look at the bottom there, total revenues from the state, you can see how they've been reduced over the last three years. We are going through this process of S2, which is legislation that was approved to kind of balance the monies, you know, where previously, everybody was kind of like this a little bit, and the districts that were growing weren't getting what they should be getting, and they were holding all the other districts like Pittman harmless, and they were staying kind of level, and they said, no, this is not right. We need to take the monies from those that are losing enrollment, and we got to give it to the ones who are getting enrollment. So that's why we still have some districts like ourselves with S2 going down in aid, and other districts going up significantly in aid. We see it right here in Gloucester County. We have a couple of school districts that have grown significantly over the years, are getting lots of money. And we have districts that have been losing staff that are losing. And then there's the formula, where you could have a district in Gloucester County in which maybe their enrollment's not growing, but they're still getting a lot of money, and then the board has to adopt a second piece to add to this to be able to then approve the final budget. All right? Right, they have to approve how each line item in the budget is going to be changed to reflect any changes the board may want to make. And we came into this meeting thinking we were going to make changes because back then, when we approved the tentative budget, there was a lot of things we weren't sure of. We didn't know how we were going to get all this money and where it was going. So we did some, we made some arbitrary decisions. So even if we didn't get the stabilization aid, we would have been making changes tonight to more properly reflect now that we've been, had time to really evaluate it, what the line should be. But then we get the stabilization aid on top of that. So we already had changes to make, and now we have these other changes. So we will be talking about them separately in a second. So we're going to be coming back to that budgeted fund balance. And I'm going to mention that now is because technically, all the stabilization aid has to go in that line. All right? So I'm going to plant that seed right now. And this is where it gets a little, I talk about messy. So you would think that when the state gives you money, that that money would go into the state aid line item, right? So you would think, okay, whether it's equalization aid or some kind of state aid, the state is giving you money to the tune of 900 and some thousand dollars, that that would go in a state aid line. The reason it's not going to be reflected there is because the state has given us the money now. They're not giving it to us next year, like they're going to give us all that other state aid. So for 2324, that's in their 23, that's in their 20, whatever it is, 2324 budget. So, you know, that's when they're going to give us that money. The state budget that was recently approved, all right? The money that they're using for stabilization aid is coming out of this year's budget. So they're going to give us the money now, and they're telling us, you have to put that in that budgeted fund balance line, that savings line, and carry it over to next year, and then you can sort it out wherever you want to sort it out. So we're going to come back to that, but I just want to point that out that that's where the stabilization aid is going to go. It is going to make that budgeted fund balance number look huge and really high when we're done with this. And there may be that question, wait a minute, Steve, you said one of your goals was to, to kind of get away from the reliance on budgeted fund balance. And I'm trying to explain in kind of a roundabout way that that's not really what's happening. We're not relying on really our savings. We, in essence, we're able to fix this problem. We feel very comfortable with where we are with our budgeted fund balance. We think it's in a place where we can realize that same amount each and every year, but it's going to look really, really weird when we put that stabilization aid in there along with it. Another biggie for us is the next line, which is the withdrawal from capital reserves. School districts have three places that they can save money, like put it in a savings account. One is their budgeted fund balance. That's one place districts are allowed to save money, budgeted fund balance. But they're only allowed to save up to 4% of their total budget. Is it operating? Probably operating, I don't know if it's operating or total. Probably operating, right? Just the surplus, the 4%. Probably just operating. So just roughly speaking, we're allowed to keep 4%. Our total budget, as you see at the bottom, is $23 million, 4%, 460 some thousand, maybe 470,000. We are allowed to keep in savings. And you need that because, you know, we have bills to pay, and sometimes you don't get our monies from the state. You know how it is even at home. You got to pay bills, but you don't get certain checks. So we are allowed to keep 4%. Anything over 4% must be either put into another savings account or given back as tax relief. That's the only choices the board has, all right? Anything over 4%. So the other two savings accounts. One of them is maintenance reserve. The board can put money into a savings account called maintenance reserve. Maintenance reserve would be monies that say, an air conditioning unit, a large air conditioning unit, a large heating unit, just all of a sudden failed, and it had to be replaced. You better have money in your maintenance reserve. Your budget's not going to be able to handle it. It's already tight. So that's why boards are allowed up to a certain amount. It's not unlimited, it's limited, but you can put a certain amount there. The other savings account of the three the board has is capital reserve. So the board could be putting, if there was a thought that we're going to put an addition somewhere, which is a capital project, repave a parking lot, which is a capital project, board could be putting money into a capital reserve account. Do we have a capital reserve account? We do. So we have, we've been putting some monies there. It's not a significant amount, but it's monies. So for example, if you look in the middle column, it says 1.4 million, 1.1430. Next to capital reserve for local share, that would have been the roof project at the middle school. So that was in this year's budget. We repaired the roof over there. It's about a million dollar project. Roofs are very important. So that's how that reserve account was used for that purpose. You can see there's 1.8 million in maintenance reserve. That's a lot of years of savings that's there. We have a rod grant right now that we've applied for through the state. The state is providing 40% funding on certain projects. We've identified for us this heating unit here in the gymnasium. We had to submit the rod grant months ago. And we wanted to make sure it was going to be in a building that we'd be occupying. It was during a period of time in which we weren't sure where we were going. We did not want to target, obviously, at that time, kindle or walls. Didn't really want to target the middle school because we really didn't know if the middle school was going to be the one that we'd be utilizing. So we targeted the high school since we knew this would be a building that would be occupied. The units in the gymnasium are ready to go. So we're looking to replace them if we get the rod grant. It is high on the priority list. It's number one, meaning they're looking, the first thing they're looking for at the state are HVAC type projects. So we're very optimistic, we'll get approval for that. But it's contributory, and we have to contribute the other 60%. So we're hoping that if we put this out to bid, that between their 40% and the money that we're putting there toward that, we'd be able to address. And it would not only, because it's now a new unit, I think it's heating and air conditioning, which now would make the entire building an air-conditioned building because that, I think, is the only place, only space that's not air-conditioned. And so there, if you look all the way at the bottom, total operating budget. This is what it takes to run the district. So you had 22 million in 2122. And you see at the top, that says actual, that's an actual audited number. It's a little bit different from the other two numbers because that is real. That's exactly what it costs. Where in the 2223, that was a revised budget. That's kind of where we are right now. But, you know, there's going to be monies left over. We're not going to spend all 25918 of that number there. There's going to be monies left. And then what we're proposing for next year at the 23 million, you can see that is significantly reduced. So that's a little bit of overview of the revenues. Flip one page. I want to point out one thing. On the next page, it's about three quarters the way down. On the left-hand side, it says ARP ESSER. All right? ARP ESSER, you go across. And if I'm on the right line, it should have 535,000. Is that right? 543? Can you see that number? Does that sound right? If you guys are following along, sound right? Okay. You can see that in the current year, we spent about 1.1 million of ARP ESSER. Again, this was the federal monies that were provided to us as part of COVID relief. Half of that went towards salaries. You know, we do what we have to do. It got us through a year. We were able to survive under the same, you know, the regular structures that we currently have. But it's, you know, it's a one and a done. Certainly would have been nice to have that money to use for other purposes. HVAC was a number one, probably was probably the number one consideration, maybe, in terms of when we first got the money about how it was going to be used. But, you know, decisions have to be made, and there were some changes made. But my point being, you can see that that money has now been freed up. The 535 is not being used for salaries. That money is now available. It could be available for this project, the HVAC project, HVAC project here, if the costs go up a little bit. It could be used for some of our transitions, if we need it for transitions. But this was one of our goals, was to free that money back up. So we've actually fixed two of our goals. We fixed the budgeted fund balance. It may not look like that, but, you know, because it's messy this year. But we have no salaries coming out of fund balance. Our fund balance is between that 500 and 600,000, which is a normal number for us. We fixed the ESSER issue here. So there are two of our three. The rest, the next page is really, there's nothing there. Not going to get into that too much. You can see our overall budget went from 30 million, and this is everything, 339. If you're looking at 27,270. Next page, state aid to Pittman. You can see just over whatever period at that time, it's been significantly reduced. Flipping to the next page, now we're moving from the revenues into the expenditures. It just says other revenue sources. Make a few bucks from Panther Club tuition. We make a few dollars. Parents paid some federal grants here and there. You know, ESSER was a big one. I mentioned that one already. Special ed tuition, those are students coming to us. Our SRACs is money from our solar panels up top, and E-rate, we get some reimbursements there. Pennies in the overall picture, but there's other revenues we do receive. I'm going to come back to the tax levy one last, because I want to focus on that a little bit more. So let's jump to the expenditures. I think the first two bullets under expenditures are very important. That the budget supports most current instructional programs, and the budget supports student programming, co- and extracurricular athletics. And I say that because we've been through, you know, a pretty tough time, you know, relative to the reductions in our budget. You see the numbers on the revenue side, but I think we're still very, very strong. We've been impacted by staffing, but a lot of that staffing has been absorbed by the fact that we've restructured the schools. And through that restructuring, there's just some natural reductions just because we don't need, you know, the duplication of services. So it's really the restructuring provided us, in essence, the savings that we needed in order to address, you know, the budgetary reductions that we were going through. Now, I'm going to tell you right now, and I'm going to come back to this piece also. We are not where we were hoping to be. You know, Chris and I, I think we're very optimistic when we, we began this process, and we were like, we're going to fix this. You know, I mentioned there were three things. You know, the three things were to, to get us to a point where we weren't relying on fund balance, which we're no longer, we're not relying on ESSER. And that moving forward, you know, we'd be in a position to be able to absorb whatever might happen. And we're going to talk about that in further detail. We're not quite there. But relatively speaking, I think when you look at the impact that this budget's had on staffing, we're very strong. We still have very strong people where we need to have them. And I mean, it's throughout all the areas. So in that regard, I think we've survived a major, almost a $2.5 million deficit to be where we are today. So that's, that's one positive. The rest you can take a look at there. So let's take a look at the actual line item numbers under advertised expenditures. I'm not going to say a lot. I think the numbers speak for themselves. I don't know that we're prepared to, to give specific answers in terms of why something's going up or why something's going down. But again, I just want to emphasize, these numbers have been scrutinized over and over. We've tried to squeeze every penny. There's generally a reason why things are what they are. First line is regular education. You can see that's taken a significant hit. It's almost a $1.2 million decrease from 2223 to 2324, because that's where our staff is. And unfortunately, you can see, it's the largest item in our budget because that's what we are. You know, we're an industry that's driven by the people that work here. It's a big number. And remember, there's, there's an increase in 2324 that even makes it look not as bad as probably what it really is. The next one is special education. We have seen reductions in our special education staff. Now, part of that is just because of a, more because of a redistribution. You know, as people became free over here, we were able to slide them over, and we've lost a few positions there. But I think you'll see that the level of services have not changed. I've said publicly that we have maintained the co-teaching model with having two teachers in every classroom for those in-class support students. Grades one through, probably should go through six, at least five, if not possibly six. So in that regard, I think we're still good there. There's some additional monies in basic skills. I mean, you can look through the rest there, just highlight a couple of things. Tuition would be one, like right in the middle there. That's a biggie. And, you know, it is what it is. And we don't fret about it. We make it work. But, you know, in three years to go from 744,000 to 1.5 million, that's a lot. And that represents the students we need to send out of district. We have students who are coming here with highly specialized needs that we cannot meet. And we've spent a lot of time, a lot of time, looking at where we could potentially start and implement programs to meet those needs, to try to keep those students in district. And if it was just a teacher and maybe a couple aides, I think we could be very successful with that. But in many respects, it's not. There's so many other supports that you need to have, either from the child study team perspective, from behavioral therapist perspectives, between other professionals that are generally need to be there to work alongside these students. And we're just not at a good break-even point. Like, we may have a couple of students here, and maybe there's somebody that might have an interest, but, you know, it's like, it's like, it's a wash, meaning it's going to cost us the same to create the program as it is to send them out. We need, we need more. You need to be a bigger district, and we're just not. So that's, makes it a challenge when you can't, and we don't really, now, because of our tightening up, you know, we don't have the space maybe that we would have liked to have. So that's kind of where we are with that one. You can look at the rest in there. There's, there's some that are going up, some that are going down. I looked down, school administration. We know we lost a couple administrators there. Essential services and adjustment. I did want to mention technology. That's just a budgetary adjustment, right? I just want to make sure. You see 00159. We're not adding technology people. These are staff members that had been previously charged somewhere else in the budget that we needed to get into that line item. Okay. Oh, okay.
There's an error, sorry, typing, and that is corrected in Schedule B. It remains zero.
Remains zero, gotcha.
Typo on my part.
All right.
I apologize.
So we put that somewhere else. Operation and maintenance. We've lost the number of our custodial staff as we've closed two buildings and other operations. And then health, transportation services, I'm sorry, health benefits at the bottom. And you can see that that's a pretty good size increase. And it always is. I mean, health benefits, although probably a little bit more so this year than maybe in past years. You know, we've been in that really nice place of 2% or 3%. But this year, it kind of jumped up a little bit higher than it normally does. And with that said, and let me kind of let this be the transition. With that said, this increase is the reason that the board has the opportunity to consider a cap adjustment. It's called banked cap. All right? So we're going to talk a little bit about that. When they went to the 2% hard cap, the legislature and the implementation of this cap was at least smart enough or just thought of it, the fact that the one thing we can't control is health benefit cost. And they wanted to put a safeguard for districts that with, you know, you can control salaries because it's negotiated. So, you know, they're saying, you can control. But when it comes to health benefits, it's what the market's going to require. So they build a safeguard in there that says, if it goes up beyond a certain point, everything beyond that certain point, and it's a calculation, it's in the system, you can then add to the tax levy, so that it's not something that you have to absorb in your budget. So they call that banked cap. And banked cap because if you don't use it now, it could roll over to later years for a certain period of time. But we're proposing tonight that the board consider the use of that banked cap. So with that, let's flip back to that tax page. Looks like it's just one page. Yep. Yep, one page. So you can see there, a quick summary, 2223 rate, 2324 rate, tax rate increase, average assessed home, projected increase of 107.27. Obviously, that's on the average. You can kind of play with your numbers, how it may apply to you. 2% cap, as you can see at the bottom there, comes out to about, comes out to 303,803. And then the banked cap that the board has available to be used for this year is the 148,506. And that's how we come up with the proposed tax levy, which you see at the bottom. And I am going to assume, and just correct me if I'm wrong, that the banked cap is figured into that 107.27. Is that correct, or right? So that's factored into that number. We've already added the 148 in. If the board decides tonight not to use the banked cap, we would have, we would have to have a conversation in terms of where that 148 is going to come from. And then we would reduce that line item because we need to keep everything in balance. So right now, on the revenue side, we have the 148,506 is in there, and it balances with the expenditures. If we reduce the revenue side by 148,506, we got to reduce the expenditure side by that same amount. So that's where we are as far as the tax levy is concerned. And I want to circle back just one more time. And I know, you know, we're all there together. Where we are as a community relative to the taxes, you know, in terms of supporting all the things we support and all the things that we value. But the challenge for school districts universally is the fact But the challenge for school districts universally is the fact that you're only getting 2% over here, and everything on the expenditure side is going up by much more than 2%. And everywhere I've been, and I know it's not what people want to hear, you've got to bump this side when you get the opportunities, because, you know, it's disproportionate. So that's what's being recommended, and it's one of the reasons, and it's certainly very difficult for us to find $148,000 worth of expenditures to reduce out of this budget. And you can look at the rest, let me just see if there's anything else there. I do have one last thing I want to mention, the personnel, you can see there, we've tried to put as much as we can, 30 positions eliminated. It's not 30 people, it's positions. We have a number of retirements, so they're kind of factored in there. So there are people that, when people retire, if they're in the right place at the right time, we have not, you know, that's a position, but it's not a person. So, you know, total, I mean, we may be in the 20s as far as probably individuals altogether as far as reductions are concerned. Programs, we've talked about the fact that K and 1 will have three classes in each of those grade levels, with the reconfiguration of 2 through 6 now in one building, and high school, junior, senior high school with 7 through 12, has helped us to address our budgetary needs. The last thing that I want to say is, you can read the rest there, the last thing that I want to say is, I mentioned three goals. I mentioned, I think we've done a good job of the non-reliance on the budget of fund balance, even though it may not reflect that, but again, it's a little messed up because of this additional aid that we received. I think we definitely are not using ESER, so the ESER monies are back available to us to be used, which is really, really good. But the budget is not where we were really hoping to be. I would probably say we were between 300 and 350,000 off where we wanted to be. After all these reductions, we still were about 350,000 where we're out of bounds, where our expenditures were higher than our revenues. Now, in saying that, that is using, again, correct me if I'm wrong, that is using about 400,000 of the stabilization aid to maintain five positions, all right? That's kind of still in this factor, and we're 300,000, but that's 500,000, 400,000 to maintain five positions. Second grade teacher, third grade teacher, guidance counselor, child study team member, and, please forget, special ed, special ed, those five. Special ed to maintain the co-teaching at all grade levels, the two and the threes to maintain four of every grade level for next year, guidance counselor to maintain two guidance counselors at the elementary school for next year, three guidance counselors here, child study team to try to keep the teams strong. We did lose one child study team member, would have been two without the extra funding. We're making some adjustments in the child study team right now to kind of make all that work. So there were the five positions. So, let's be very clear, I won't say, I should be talking about, let's be very clear, those five positions, right now, are with the stabilization aid, which will not be there after next year. So unless something really, really good happens, those are five positions that we're starting the budget without. Second grade would be fine, because they have a small first grade moving up, because first grade's only going to have three, not necessarily the same with third. Special education will be impacted, there's a special education teacher in there, all right? And we would not have then a teacher at each of those grade levels that I previously mentioned. Guidance would be significantly impacted. What we probably would be doing, we'd be moving that elementary guidance counselor up to the high school, is what we would do. We like the idea of having the two together, they are the two elementary guidance counselors that we currently have. For next year, as we go through this transition, new building, new everything, we're trying our very, very best to maintain as much stability as possible. We'll have our two principals in the same building, we'll have our two guidance counselors in the same building, mostly the same teachers, teaching the same grade levels, with co-teaching at all the same grades, sixth grade still in a departmentalized setting, having a sixth grade experience. So there's generally, other than the building itself, the program will, should be pretty darn close to what we currently have with some few changes. So, again, remember, we start without those five. So that's about 400,000. Then we had this other 300 and some thousand, in which we just, you know, we couldn't come up with anything. Or what we came up with, we didn't like, or what we came up with, we just didn't feel it was the right time, because it would really weaken us in our ability to maintain that stability, that we thought was very, very important. There is a plan over here, you know, that we have in mind, I'm not going to put it out there, because it'll create some levels of hysteria, but, you know, we crossed that bridge when we come to it, but there is a plan, and at some point, maybe, we'll talk about it a little bit, in terms of how we can utilize the staff, how we can utilize certifications, you know, it's, we hope we don't get there, but it's, you know, looking at certifications and maybe putting people where maybe they're, have not, don't have a lot of experience. I mean, we're going to be doing that already, but we've tried to minimize that as much as possible, but it is a plan. And there's, you know, three positions here, which we could, you know, move into other places, but we just don't think now, with everything that's going on, now's not the time. But it's there, and it could take care of most of that 300. So I just want you to know that there is a plan relative to how we have used one-time funding, as far as two years from now, budget is concerned, but we didn't quite get to where we wanted to be. And that's pretty much it. All in all, with everything that we've been through, I think it's a good budget. We're going to hope for the best as far as next year, but this is a survive and move forward. So as far as next year's concerned, we know the changes, and this is the monies that we need to support them. I guess we're Q and A? Board, or anybody? Yeah, sure.
So we will move to our public hearing. The Pittman Public School Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves in school matters and community interests. This is the first of two public comments we will have tonight. The first public hearing is on the budget. This is a public comment and not a dialogue between the board and the public, you have three minutes to speak, and it is your opportunity to comment or ask questions. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name, municipality, of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. Mr. Chris, would you like to take the microphone to individuals who'd like to speak, or would you like them to use the podium?
I'll do this one.
Okay. So if you'd like to speak, if you could speak into the microphone, so that members of the public at home who are watching can hear you.
Dave Ho, Pittman, just, could you break down, or could you give us the administrative staffing at the three schools that will be operating next year?
Good question. So again, it's one of those, again, where we have to kind of work with the team that we have. So right now, Mrs. Kirsten Miller will continue to be the principal at Memorial School. Unfortunately, we're losing the two vice principals at each of our two schools, so really, all we have left are principals, both our principal from Kendall School, Carol Mason, and from Wall School. Chris Morris will be at the new elementary school as co-principals. At the high school, we will have Sherri, who will be overseeing the high school operation, and Kristin, who will be overseeing the junior high operation. We haven't finalized the actual grades, we're kind of going back and forth, does Kristin do 7, 8, 9, to kind of balance it a little bit, and Sherri do 10, 11, 12, but then it kind of, what does that, what does that mean for the ninth grade? Is the ninth grade junior high? Is it senior high? So maybe they should be better to stay together, we're going to go, we're going back and forth, but they will be the two administrators in charge. We, we're a little concerned that we're a little light administratively at the high school, the junior, senior high level, maybe a little heavier at the elementary level. I think it's pretty much been announced that Shay Mary has submitted his letter of resignation, he's taken another position. So somewhere in there, we have to talk about how we're going to meet the needs as the special ed staff, with the current administrative team that we have, and, you know, that, you know, may fall somewhere, you know, as I said, at the elementary level with the people that we have, we're going to talk about what that looks like. So we still have a lot of sorting out to do. Other than that, there are no other changes. Is that, trust that?
Michael Razee, Pittman, can you tell us how many students, roughly, based on your current numbers, you anticipate at each of those schools?
I don't know. Roughly, how rough? Do you have access to that? All right, we'll let her come back, we'll come back to that one. Yeah, question. If I could, I'm going to talk about a couple other things that I think are important. Obviously, with the transition, there's a lot of cost involved, a lot of cost involved. And so, you know, one question may be, how are we handling the transition from a financial perspective? Fortunately, the board has access to some one-time funding resources that are available that will help with the transition. So one of those is going to be the moving costs. Moving costs are, look like they're coming in around 200, 240,000 to move everything, that's the entire summer. We're using a professional moving company who's done this for many, many school districts. So we have that. The stabilization aid, roughly, say 950, 70,000 dollars. We're using about 600 and change for our teaching positions. That remaining piece is, will be used for the moving cost. So we have that covered. So if anybody wants to know where that money's coming from, again, we have that money set aside. We talked about the potential of the ROD grant here, that money's in maintenance reserve. Playground, playground's a biggie, and we want to do it the very best that we can. ESER monies can be used for the playground, so we have 500,000 in ESER monies, now freed up, which was one of our goals, so that money can be used, so that's a one-time resource, it's not something we, again, we don't want to use in the budget. And we also have some one-time funding we received that was kind of, that was withheld from us, was federal monies that were, in essence, withheld with us a couple years ago, and then through, I guess it was a lawsuit, exactly, there was a lawsuit filed on behalf of about 20-some districts in the state of New Jersey, roughly? Yep. ADA, yep. We were one of them, and we got that money back, and it was like 600 and some thousand. We made some of that available to the schools this year, in terms of a few odd cents, we're working hard to do some upgrading in the auditorium, we just have not had the money to do that, so to fix some of the lighting issues in there, fix the curtains, we've got to replace the curtains, we really want to get that place back to where it needs to be, and maybe a couple other things here and there. So we do have resources, so I just want you to know, as tight as this is, from an operating perspective, we do have some one-time monies. Any numbers? All right, still working? All right, was there any other questions?
Adam Azola, Pittman, does this budget factor in, or can it factor in in the future usage of the old, the two buildings that are being closed, so Walls and Kendall, if there's a lease agreement or something, is that in there today?
There's nothing, wow, let's not say that, I can't say that. That was a great question. It's a great question, because this budget does reflect the use of one of the buildings. So we had a school district reach out to us with the possibility of utilizing the wing at Wall School for a preschool program, I think I've said that previously. And right now, because they will not be officially informed, like we weren't until September of next year, we really don't know if it's going to happen, but we have reflected some revenue in there, a pretty good size amount of revenue. So we'll wait and see. So we're hopeful that we will be able to lease out at least part of that building, and we're going to continue to look for leasing opportunities, your point being, leasing makes it ongoing, it's a revenue source, certainly, it's, the board's prerogative, they could sell one of the buildings, it's a one-time revenue source, it doesn't help us from a budgetary perspective, but maybe it helps to address some other larger needs that we may have, if it's, you know, any significant amount of money. So yes, we're going to look for every one of those opportunities. Matter of fact, I just sent some, I had a community member who reached out to me months ago, as we were going through this conversation, about the possible use of one of our buildings, let's say, for a charter school. And I reached back out and just didn't know if she had some sort of a connection, obviously, I'd said to her initially, I think there'd be interest, as long as it's not somebody who's competing against us, you know, and maybe it's a program, like, I know that the county was looking, because they reached out to us at one time, about the possible use of our classrooms for a more highly special ed, a special education program, because they're really, you know, like I said, we don't have enough ourselves to have that program, and maybe everybody else does, but if we all group together, then maybe we can offer the program and all share the cost. But nobody had room. And when they reached out to us at the beginning of the year, we didn't have room at the time, because, you know, five buildings, we really didn't have any space. The preschool program, we had just gotten approval for the preschool, so we used up all those classrooms, now we have room. So we may revisit that with the hopes that maybe somebody would come in, kind of like a charter school, maybe more about special education, or some other area that does not compete with us. Got it?
400, approximately, this is all approximate, approximately 494 students at the 7 through 12 building, and 432 students at the 2 through 6 building. Just approximate numbers.
Good-sized schools.
So my follow-up, since you have a breakdown. Do you have the breakdown between 7th and 8th, and 9th through 12?
Breakdown between 7th and 8th and 9th through 12.
So, 7th and 8th, you have 72 in 7th, 84, I'll just give you the numbers straight out, 84 in 8th. In 9th grade, you have 84, 10th you have 85, 11th you have 96, and 12th you have 73.
So about 150 and change in 7th and 8th grade, minus the 490-something?
Correct, 494.
494, so roughly 340-ish for high school. And we're at 333 right now, so not really far off with our current numbers, and that's projected, not, well, we don't know how many 8th graders potentially are or not, we don't have those numbers yet, do we?
No, we do not.
Maybe not directly budget, maybe more of a plea, but as you merge the junior high into the high school, and those seem to be the grade levels where your test scores start to fall off a cliff, please think about how to get more instructional time for language arts and math at those grade levels than the 44-minute class periods are just, apparently are not working, and I can't imagine how they can work. Got to have more. We've talked about, I talked about this before.
I think we both talked about this before, and we've talked about it a number of times, and I'm going to just, to tell you where we are, it's something we've talked a lot about. When we began the conversation about the merging of the junior 7th, 8th grade, junior and senior high school, one of the first things we looked at was the possibility of having different schedules. I was formerly just last year in addition, in Woodstown, in which the middle school and high school are in the same building. And the high school ran a traditional high school schedule, and the middle school ran their own schedule, in which every period was an hour long, and it was a great schedule. The issue there was, they were not sharing staff. And as we started to look at our situation here, it became obvious, the only way that we can save what we needed to save was to share staff. So now, because we're sharing staff, our schedules have to be identical, and then being identical puts us back on this very traditional schedule. So your point is absolutely on target, Rebecca and I have spent a lot of time with Kristin, and we know it's something we're going to be looking at. I will tell you right now, without almost certainty, and I'm not sure what you've heard, so next year, both the junior and senior high school will be on eight-period days, all right? They will be on eight-period days. This is a one-year transition, just, it's just so much, and we just needed to do what we had to do, but year after, we're back on our, let me see, the high school will be back on its nine-period day, has to be on a nine-period day as far as electives are concerned. So, just so if you hear that, the board, as you hear that, I mean, it's a concern, we're going to do the very best that we can, but it was part of that transition. So whether or not, you know, once we kind of get the nuances of how we can get these two schools to work together, maybe we can then get the junior high on its own schedule, or maybe we can get them more periods, we've thought, we've talked, you have one-period reading and one-period writing. But I'll tell you this, the only way you add more time, unfortunately, is to add staff. That's the only way you can do, really do it. I might say, not the only, maybe other things will work out, and we know that's going to be a challenge, so. Okay, yeah, it's good, but we know, you're right, it's a very, very important piece.
A challenge.
Yes. Yep. And I'm going to say that, and then I'm going to go as far as saying also, you know, when we talk about test scores, and I think, we hope, we've done very well, you know, especially at the lower end coming up, there are teachers that are doing it, and we're getting it done, you know, with the time that's been provided, so we need to look at that also. All right, I think that's it. All right, thank you. So I guess to be clear, I should have said, the board, the board has this, what'd you call it, what did you call it?
Schedule B.
Schedule B. So we have a Schedule B, the board has, and anybody who wants copies, you can certainly get that on the short, do we have copies out there, Schedule B?
Do not, no, I do not.
Okay, so just so you know, the board has all the changes, they're going to be adopting changes to all these line items to incorporate the stabilization They're going to be adopting changes to all these line items to incorporate the stabilization aid and also to move monies around now to properly reflect the reductions that were made. When we approved the tenet of budget a month or so ago, whatever that was, we did some arbitrary reductions, not knowing where we were going to make the changes. This now corrects all of that. not knowing where we were going to make the changes. This now corrects all of that.
This is public comment. I will turn it over to committee chairperson, Mr. Grossman.
Thank you. First time, we need to, do we do the amendment first or do we motion it first?
Yes, motion and then we just amend the whereas, on that third whereas, please.
I recommend we approve item one as written with an amendment to the third where has to say the Board of Education amends the 2324 budget as followed on Schedule B.
You have a second? Second Bolton? Any discussion on that amending of that item? Reflect the Schedule B changes?
So we're going to approve just that one as a stand alone?
We just need to approve the amendment. Okay, sorry.
Okay, so he needs to motion the amendment?
He did. And then, all in favor?
Right, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, back to you, Mr. Grossman. You want to make the motion for the amendment to approve all?
There's only one.
Right, oh, it's curriculum, I apologize, I'm sorry. Now I move to Mrs. Papalardo.
We need to close out the public hearing before you can, so we need to do a roll call and then we'll close out the public hearing and then you can do your action meeting.
Okay.
For the others.
Okay, so we need a motion to close the public hearing on the budget?
First one is your roll call.
Okay. Higby Iona?
What am I, ready?
Yeah, this, I'm kind of lost, right? Right. For the
Financing committee, right?
Finance committee.
We've lost one.
For item number one?
Yeah, yes.
Then yes.
Yes. Higby Iona?
Yes.
Papalardo?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Grossman?
Yes.
Miller? Motion carries. So now I make a motion to close the public hearing on the budget?
Yes, because we need to go into action.
And second?
Second Grossman.
All in favor, roll call.
All in favor.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Seeing none, we will go back into our action committee and turn it over to Mrs. Papalardo.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through 20 as written.
Second Grossman.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rose called the vote. Higby Iona?
Yes, to all except on motion number four, I have to abstain as to Melissa Bianchini.
Papalardo?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Grossman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. So bring us to our second public comment. It's our second public comment, please state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable and limit your comments to three minutes. Please step to the podium to be recognized to speak. Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I apologize. I misspoke. The board is going to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel. We will not be taking action at the conclusion of this executive session, but may I have a motion to go into executive session? So moved, Papalardo.
Second Grossman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay.